May 8, 2020, Budget Study Session to order. Roll call, please.
Flor.
Here.
Ms. Yelsey. Ms. Yelsey.
Here.
Thank you. Ms. Black.
Here.
Ms. Bartow. Ms. Bartow.
She is on her way.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Anderson, thank you. Ms. Snell.
Here.
Ms. Bart, Ms. Matoye.
Here.
Dr. Navarro.
Here.
Thank you.
Great. By order of Executive Order N2920 issued on March 18, 2020, the Newport Mesa Unified School District Board meetings will be closed to the public. The public may watch the meeting by joining the Zoom webinar, and we have provided that link. There's also habrá interpretación al español a través del mismo enlace de Zoom. I just want to remind everybody that we're going to put everybody on mute. Sheri will have, will be, Sheri, are you going to keep us on mute unless we're speaking?
Jennifer has that.
Okay, Jennifer is going to keep us on mute. Another couple of simple reminders. If you have to leave the meeting for whatever reason, please put yourself on, take off your video. So we're cautious about all of that. We don't want any embarrassing pictures going out. And also, let's see, Ms. Bartow. There have been no public comments or questions from the board members. There have been some comments and some suggestions. I am going to make the suggestion that if you have suggestions about practices or ideas, please cite where you're getting the information because we are very limited on the number of individuals that can do research. As you know, all of us are working from home and so, and they're working on lots of other priorities than to try and do the research. So if you have suggestions, I appreciate Ms. Bartow. Ms. Anderson, she's always, when she sends her suggestions out, she always puts in the information so that we can refer to it, and I really appreciate that, Ashley. Thank you very much. But again, we're just, we're trying, this is our third meeting, so we're going to be trying to, we keep getting better at this. I will let you know that we are dispensing with, basically at this point in time, the three minutes, we're going to read all the public comments that are sent, that are sent in. It still has a 400-word limit, but if it goes a little longer, we're going to be okay with that. But we just don't want 65 pages, to be real honest. We can't afford that. But again, if you have suggestions, and we love suggestions, I know Fred and Sheri love suggestions. It's just that we just don't have the capabilities and the time to do the research. So just give us, if it's a district that's doing something different, send it over to Fred and Russell or whoever, and Sheri, so that we can, she can follow up immediately with that specific district or suggestion. I'm still, I'm waiting for, I'm waiting for Ms. Bartow, but I don't think we better wait too much longer. So, Dr. Navarro, would you like to take over? And we have, let's see, adoption of the agenda. May I have a motion to adopt the agenda?
Still moved. Matoye moved.
And a second? A second?
Second.
Thank you. Ms. Matoye moved, and Mrs. Black seconded. Roll call, please.
Ms. Flor.
Here.
Ms. Yelsey.
I mean, yes.
Yes. Ms. Black.
Yes.
Ms. Bartow. Ms. Anderson.
Here. Yes.
Ms. Snell.
Yes.
And Ms. Matoye.
Yes.
Ms. Flor, Ms. Bartow's been locked out. She's been trying to get in for the last couple of minutes.
Okay. Jennifer, can you let her in?
She's using some name I don't know. I do not see her anywhere.
I don't know that she's locked out of our meeting. She's locked out of the room that her stuff is in, from what I understand. So.
Oh.
She will text us all, I'm sure, if she's not in. We'll let you know as soon as possible.
Is she in the waiting room? Is there a waiting room?
She is not in the waiting room.
Oh, she's locked out of her office.
Well, yes, but.
Okay, so she has her computer in her office. So that's private. So, can she hear us at all? Can we text her and have her use her phone?
Sure.
Yeah, let's have her use her phone until she gets on, and then. So, Ms., so we're going to community input on special agenda items only. Mrs. Black, would you read the statement, please?
Sure. This is an opportunity for the public to address the board on special meeting agenda items only. Each speaker has three minutes or more to address the board, and speakers may not cede unused minutes to other speakers. With board consent, the president may increase or decrease the time allowed for public comment depending on the topic and the number of persons wishing to be heard. When addressing the board, it is helpful if you state your name and address for the record.
Terrific. We do have three comments. So, Ms. Yelsey, would you read the first comment, please?
This is from Britt Doughty.
Great, thank you.
Did you want me to read that? It says Anderson.
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I realize that she just, she put them down. Yes, go ahead, Ms. Anderson. I apologize.
This is from Britt Doughty. Dr. Britt Doughty, President of Newport Mesa Federation of Teachers. The district budget is one of the most complex items considered by the school board. I'm glad time is being taken to explain the broad outlines of how it has developed. A significant philosophy I ask the board to consider is this. The largest and most important expense of the district are employees. Without the employees, we would not be serving children. All of the economic indicators for California point to an incredibly uncertain and potentially fiscally hard time for Newport Mesa next year. I ask the board to deeply think about its priorities and look at supporting the most important expense, employees that serve kids. This included a lot of, this includes a lot of certificated staff and classified staff. There are a lot of certificated staff working with kids this spring, social workers, special education specialists, counselors, and intervention teachers. We also see the classified support provided by food service, IT, special ed instructional aids, translation support, and much more. Please reevaluate the various construction projects, service contracts, trainings and trips, and other soft costs to make sure that we have the employees in place to support kids next August. We know our students are going to need more emotional and academic support next fall than ever before. We don't know what will happen with regard to the presence of COVID-19 in our community and how that will affect instruction. This is a time to make sure that we have the right people in place to support kids and be mindful of costs that could be postponed or canceled.
Terrific. Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Doughty. Wendy Leece, and I believe Michelle saying that she's getting into a room now. She there yet? No, I don't see her. So, Ms. Black, would you read the second, the second comment from Wendy Leece, please?
Michelle's in.
I'm open.
I was just on mute, sorry.
Oh, sorry.
Okay, go ahead.
Okay, Michelle, would you like, can you read the second comment from Mrs. Leece?
Absolutely, thank you. In 1992, an employee embezzled the district. This is from Wendy Leece. Two years later, the county went bankrupt. At some point, the trustees established a citizens' finance committee to advise trustees. It is time to bring back the finance committee and appoint financially savvy local citizens to a new finance committee to help trustees spend millions of tax dollars to educate our children. Make it a priority in 2021. I am the vice chair of the city's FIPAC Finance and Pension Committee, and I can tell you, the city council now more than ever appreciates the wisdom from this committee appointed by the city council. Also, one of the recommendations FIPAC made to the city council, which the council ultimately approved, was to establish a 115 trust solely for pensions, only pensions, locked in, wise decision. On April 17, I filed a public records request asking for information on the district's policy, which allows funds to be moved out of Fund 17, the history behind the risk management stabilization account, and under what circumstances these tax dollars are moved out of Fund 17. The board voted in the 90s for the endowment from the Irvine Company to be used for educational enhancements. As a board member, I remember voting for the definition of enhancement. As of today, I have not been told when my public records request will be fulfilled. COVID-19 cannot be a permanent excuse. Budget discussions this year must be transparent, and understanding the use of Fund 17 is important to this taxpayer and former board member. My public records request is reasonable. It is incumbent on the district to be transparent in all its affairs. Finally, please allow citizens to make real-time comments during meetings using Zoom. Both Newport Beach and Coast to Mesa city councils have done it. It is time for the public to be able to engage in comment in school district meetings. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Wendy. And, Ms. Black, you have Marty O'Meara?
Yes, from Marty O'Meara. Why is this meeting not an open session on Zoom? Budget discussion should be open to the public.
And I believe, thank you, and I believe Ms. Snyder responded to her and provided her again the additional link. This is an open session. Our study sessions are always open. Again, the difference is, right now, is that we are in Zoom, and we are in a webinar, and we have panelists, and that allows those individuals to speak. So we'll move on to the item that we're all here to talk about, which is the Budget, Item 6, Study Session Budget Background. I want to remind everybody that this is the background and that on May 29, we will have a second study session, which will be more in line with actual budget. As I want to remind everybody, next week is the May revise, and so it would be nice if we gave Mr. Trader some time to digest and for all of us to digest the draconian and devastating May revise that's coming out, and so that he will be able to prevent, provide us with more accurate information on May 29 regarding the actual budget that we may be looking at adopting. So, moving on, Dr. Navarro.
Thank you, Mrs. Flor. First of all, it's nice to see all the board members. Even though we're in separate places, it's still nice to see everybody, and I thank you for spending time with us again. You know, in January, I would have thought that this session would be going very differently with our set of assumptions. Unfortunately, we don't know what those assumptions are right now, to be frank. I think Dr. Doughty was right in saying that these are unusual times, and there are some issues that are evolving, which are out of our control. So today, you know, rather than go over the typical assumptions of what we've had in the past, what we spent in the past, what we received in revenue in the past, I think it's best for us to understand as best as possible where we've been and where we are right now. So I'm going to ask Mr. Holcomb to introduce Mr. Trader, who will, who has put together some information for us. Mr. Holcomb?
Thank you, Dr. Navarro. There really isn't much for me to do other than to ask Mr. Trader to come online with us as well and to bring his presentation and start to walk us through the work that he's been doing and preparing us for this discussion. Mr. Trader?
Good morning. Good to be with you this morning. Can you all see my screen?
Yes.
All right.
Yes.
Yes.
All right. So today, we're just going to cover three topics. Each topic, if the board president would like, we can stop after each topic and have a recap discussion and get the board's perspective, if you like. We will start off discussing the district's response to the Great Recession. This will help answer the question of how the board has handled economic crises in the past. You know, in many ways, the board established a template for handling economic crises during the Great Recession. And secondly, we will look at the current lay of the land, what we're going to perhaps be dealing with, and then we will look at next steps. So let's take a look at the Great Recession. You know, in many ways, the district adjusted, and those waves are still with us today. So let's get into the Wayback Machine, and let's dial that back to 2009. And here's a slide that was presented. This slide, board members Flor, Black, and Yelsey will remember. It's the same exact slide that was presented on February 9, 2009, with a budget planning session much like this one today. And at the time, the economy was cratering, and the state was in deep trouble projecting the deficit of $41.8 billion. Today, the state is projecting a $54.3 billion deficit, $13.4 billion in the current year and $40.9 billion in the budget year. It's a few billion different, but what's a few billion between friends, right? Essentially, we find ourselves in the same dire situation as we did in 2009. So the impact to that, of the Great Recession, was that the education side of the budget was disproportionately impacted over the course of the recession, as shown here in what is the School Services Alligator chart. Schools lost, on average, $1,503 per ADA. For our district, for NMUSD, that was about $30 million in total over the span of the entire recession. And current estimates are, for this COVID-19 recession, $2,800 per ADA. So the state did a few things for us to try to help us during the Great Recession. And one of those was that they allowed to, at the time, we participated in about 10 big categorical programs, and they allowed some flexibility to transfer amongst those programs. And it was very helpful. We utilized that. However, these programs are no more. They're not there anymore. And as such, the state is in no position to really offer any kind of flexibility in this regard. Secondly, the state allowed us to sweep any balances from certain categorical programs. And again, this was very helpful, and the district utilized that option. That option may not be available to us with AV 1835 going forward. Now, it's important to look at what the state did to us because many of the tools that they used during the Great Recession may come back for use again because each one of them detrimentally impacted the district. So to start off with, the state simply didn't fund COLA. Principal apportionment payments were slowed down. Cash apportionments were deferred, and this costed us $10 million at the height of the Great Recession. And this proved to be a well-used tool that the state used, and I expect that they will use the same tool again. It's akin to Wimpy's method of finance. I gladly pay you Tuesday for a hamburger today. Revenue limit funding was reduced. The state extracted millions of dollars from the district by utilizing the mechanism known as fair share. Categorical funding was cut by 20%. Mandated reimbursements were deferred and were arbitrarily audited literally to death. NMUSD is still owed $20 million in mandated claims from the state associated with this period. And sadly, to this day, we are involved in litigation over this issue. And so it was a desperate time for the state, and we can see that the state utilized desperate measures to cope with the economic consequences. Here's again another slide that was presented on February 9, 2009. And as a result, the state had to balance their books, and that balancing was on our side. And we had to cut $8 million out of our budget. We had no choice but to cut. And in terms of magnitude, we are confident that the situation's worse than 2009. Our current situation's worse than 2009. And the hope is that the state has a rainy day fund, which is good. And the state's more tuned to the value schools have to the economy in helping the economy get going again. And there's possible federal help in the future. So we hope for those things. Hopefully, those will be on our side. But we need to remember, though, there's a double whammy out there because not only do we have to deal with the state and what they're doing, but we also have to look at our property tax funding stream because it's the largest funding stream that we have. And at the time, at the height of the Great Recession, our year-over-year property tax growth was less than 1%. So that's something that we're monitoring, looking at very carefully. So with that, then, that's the Great Recession. Do we want to stop here and talk, or would you like me to move on, President Flor?
I'm muted. Any questions? Let me put on my screen to see whether I've got any hands up. Ms. Matoye, you have your hand up.
I do. Yesterday, Mrs. Flor and I participated in a discussion with Senator Morlock, who is very well-versed in budget and finance, going through the bankruptcy of Orange County. And just in general, that's his area of expertise. He did mention that we do have a Prop 98 rainy day fund for education, but that it just started getting funded. It's, I believe, Mrs. Flor, correct me if I'm wrong, it was $500 million. It had nothing to do with the letter "B" in it, and the deficit is so huge that he anticipated it would be gone in a blink of an eye. And it would help the LCAP people, not necessarily us. So while there is a rainy day fund out there, it may or may not impact us, and it's something we need to remember. And one of the things I was hoping from this discussion, and it may be coming later, so I'm good, I'm okay with delayed gratification. I would love to hear us talk about what the board had to do, what the district did, what cuts meant, what does that mean to us? Because I don't know that anybody on the board is so irresponsible that we think we can just go la di da di da and do things as they have, always have been. And somewhere, I'd also like us to explain that different money comes from different pots, and we can't necessarily free it up. So, thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Anderson?
Yes, I echo everything that Mrs. Matoye said. And I also would love to know a little bit about what was cut directly after the embezzlement happened because I think that is also a time within the last 20 years that there were significant cuts that we had to do. So I wanted to hear also what needed to be cut in specific form then as well.
Great. Thank you. Any others? Also, Jeff, during the Great Depression, the Great Recession, districts surrounding us went, did furlough days. Is that correct? And there were a lot of layoffs. Is that not correct?
That is correct. We did not do furloughs. We did not do that, or a pay cut, no.
So we kept our employees, I mean, we didn't, we, we, we had the flexibility and the ability to, we worked on our categorical-funded teachers, but the bulk of our employees were not furloughed, or we didn't do layoffs. Is that correct?
We did do some layoffs, but that was mostly positions, vacancies that we did not fill. So, yeah, no furloughs. We did some layoffs, but it was mostly attrition-related.
Okay, great. Thank you.
And then also, too, for the county bankruptcy. So we've had, in the past 25 years, the Orange County bankruptcy, the embezzlement, and then the recession. So what did Newport Mesa do during those times? I think there's a lot to learn from that, which is partly why I'm glad we're having this meeting, so we can come in prepared, and we don't necessarily have to recreate the wheel on some things.
Great. Jeff, do you think you could get that historical for us and send it out to us?
Yes, and at the time the bankruptcy happened and the time of the embezzlement, the district was bouncing in and out of revenue limit, and it was a very different kind of situation. And there were more draconian kinds of things that occurred during that time.
Yeah. Thank you. Okay, moving on. Okay, Jeff, go ahead.
Okay, so let me share my screen again here. All right, let's talk about the lay of the land. You know, one usually assesses the lay of land in preparation for action, and given what we are facing, we are going to have to take some action. There's no way around that. So how bad is it going to be? You might know this guy here. This is Bob Blatner. Bob Blatner is a consultant in Sacramento. He's very well-connected, understands what's happening there. And Ed Source recently interviewed him, and they asked him, they said, hey, Bob, how bad is it going to be? Bob's response was, it's going to be really bad. It's already really bad. And this was before the state just yesterday dropped the bomb of a $54 billion deficit. So it's going to be really, really bad. And why is he saying that? He's saying that because there's disturbing things that are happening to our economy. This is a chart from the New York Times. It's showing the gross domestic product, which is the sum of kind of everything that the nation produces, and it's showing the change. So if you look at the left-hand vertical point there, you see percentages, and it's showing the percentage change in gross domestic product. And you see on the left-hand side here, the Great Recession, here, what happened in the Great Recession to gross domestic product. And then you go over to the right, and you compare to what's happening currently. And this is just, this is the thing that's important here. It's just our first quarter. We're already registering a negative 4.8% decline in gross domestic product, or production. And so, as you see, this is moving very fast. What took us, you know, about a year to accomplish, we've already accomplished here in the first quarter, moving very quickly. And when you compare that, so again, let's take gross domestic product and compare that to the last four recessions. So on the left-hand side here, on the vertical column, you can see the change in gross domestic product, 5%. And on the horizontal piece here, where you see the 0369, that's the month into the recession. And these lines here represent the last four recessions. And so you look at the black line. This black line is the Great Recession. And then you look at the red dotted line. That's the current estimate for the COVID-19 recession. And you can see here that it's already two to three times deeper in comparison to the Great Recession, and it's moving. We're only a month or so into the COVID-19 recession, and look where we're going. We're looking at some substantial declines. And that's showing up in unemployment. Unemployment has gone off like a bomb. You can see here on this chart here, this is the March unemployment claims. And you can compare over here to the left, the record high, this is the record high prior to COVID-19, so in weekly claims. So unemployment has just gone off like a bomb. And you can see that here, on this chart here, in terms of cumulative jobless claims. This is a cumulative chart. And you see on the left-hand side here, these are claims in the millions. And you can see on this horizontal line, this is days into the recession, and this blue and orange line, those are the previous recessions. We had the housing recession, and the tech recession. And you see this black line is the COVID-19 line. And so what this is telling us is it took us one month in COVID-19 to do what it took in terms of job claims, jobless claims, what it took over a year to accomplish in the past two recessions. So this is a very fast-moving recession. So this is a very fast-moving recession, and it's deep, and anyway, this is, this is very fast. So, you know, when will it end? We don't know. Hopefully, we will be able to get a haircut soon, and we don't end up like Cousin Nick from The Addams Family. And so let's take a look at economic scenarios and what they look like, because this might give the board some context for what, kind of what we're in for. And so economic, there can be, an economic recovery can look like a V. And that's usually when we have a sharp decline, very brief trough, and then a sharp incline. This is probably not going to happen, given the restraints that are being placed on businesses. You know, there's only going to be half the number of tables in restaurants, and people may not be so inclined to participate in the economy just yet. So probably not looking at a V. Maybe it could be, look like a U. That's where you have a sharp decline, prolonged trough, and a sharp incline. Maybe this is possible, perhaps. We could have an L. We don't want it to be an L, because an L is a depression. And that's where you have a sharp decline, and then you just don't go back to where you were at, where you were at. And that's, we don't want that. We don't want an L. And then it could be a bounce in and out of recession, a W, where you're bounced in and out of it. Most people are kind of settling on a swoosh, something like a swoosh. Either way, though, it's going to be quite a ride. It's going to take us a little bit of time to dig out of this. And we're talking, you know, a year or two that we're having to take a look and deal with this kind of thing. So let's take a pause here. So what does this mean to Newport Mesa? If you have small children in the room, you need to, may need to cover their eyes, you may need to cover your own eyes, because this contains scenes of disturbing graphic, unacceptable, misbehaving numbers. So this is what we're, could, this is what this could mean to Newport Mesa. So let's take a look at what the state may do, and we've discussed some tools that they used during the Great Recession. They may be introducing a new tool called negative COLA. And you'll remember Mike Fine, he's a former NMUSD CBO. He's now with FICMAT. FICMAT is the agency to assist districts in financial distress. They're, they're a leading expert on school finance. And FICMAT recently released guidance that they expect the best-case scenario for us is a 2% negative COLA. And worst case is a negative 10%. So you may say now, we're basic aid, why would we care? We don't get COLA. Doesn't, you know, that is going to impact us. But just as the state did in the Great Recession, they may implement what is known as fair share. And it's a method to make us share the same financial pain as our fellow LCFF districts. And so, and you may be asking, what would that mean to us? So let's take a look here. If we had a zero COLA over here on the right-hand side, that would be wonderful. We'd be doing high fives. It would be just absolutely terrific to have a zero COLA. However, it goes negative, if they do a 1% negative, that's 2 million. One and a half, 3 million. Two, 4 million. 3%, 6 million. Four, 8 million dollars. I didn't have the heart to go any further. I couldn't, just couldn't do it. So you see, this is significant, and they can easily get to that money through our principal apportionment. We currently get about 8 million dollars in principal apportionment. They could do that very easily. So at the height, in, in, in fact, at the height of the Great Recession, the state was taking 8 million a year from the district. And as a percent of budget, that was a 3.32% hit. So then, we also, you know, are also concerned about our property tax projections. We're monitoring those, and we'll see what happens with that. The next secured payment is due on May 21st, and so we'll have that in time for your May 29th study session. And so we should be able to provide some more information on that. But let's talk about cash flow and the impact that deferrals may have on the district. Now, cash is terribly important, because when you run out, you are done. It's just done, it's over. And so during the Great Recession, and before that, the district had to borrow money to keep the general fund solvent over the cash drive period of July through December. We have this cash drive period that we have to deal with. And borrowing money is expensive, and it's effort-intensive. It requires attorneys, and financial advisors, brokers, and on and on and on. Now, the treasurer's been a little bit more open to letting us borrow money, but still, that's going to be costly, and it will be time-intensive, effort-intensive. And so if you think of cash flow needs as kind of like the, the gas gauge in your car, and there's not many more disturbing feelings about, of running out of gas when you're in little nowhere, you don't want to do that. Maybe perhaps some of you've been there before, I don't know. But the district has about $43.7 million available to keep the general fund solvent. And at that level, we have a full tank. But, as we know, the board drives a full-size SUV, and it has air conditioning, lots of newly-installed air conditioning, and you're cruising with the pedal to the metal, because you want to get your students to where they need to go quickly. And you have all the Chromebooks plugged in, so our gas mileage is compared to a Ferrari. We don't very, very good gas mileage, are you here? We don't get very good gas mileage. So we need 25 million, just under normal conditions, to keep the, the general fund solvent during this cash drive period. Then when you factor in the deferral, now we're looking at, it's getting a little more dicey, the pump light is now turned on. And then we factor in a best-case scenario, which is the least of the worst cases, from FICMAT, a negative 4 million dollars. Now we're, now the red E is lit. So I'm expecting there are going to be some cash flow issues. We're going to have to sharpen our pencil, we're going to figure out how to deal with that into next year, so we can keep things afloat. So that is the lay of the land. Do we want to have any discussion on the lay of the land, or would you like me to continue?
I'm muting myself. Okay, Ms. Anderson?
What are some of the past and best ways that we have dealt with the cash flow issue after July in the past circumstances when we had to cut back? Because I know we're, but we borrow from the county, right?
In the past, we have issued tax revenue anticipation notes, and we have not borrowed from the county, because the county really didn't offer that option at that time.
Okay. So what are other options?
The other option currently is to go to the county treasurer and borrow from the county treasurer. Or, and, and the other option too, of course, is to sharpen our pencil, and, which we always do, but to manage cash very carefully.
Or a combination of both.
Correct.
Jeff, the county, we, we, we are required to put all our funds into the county, but there's that long-term, there's that long-term fund. Will that be made of, do you think that's going to be made available for withdrawal or for needs?
The, the county has been very helpful in this regard, and they will make available whatever cash we need. It'll come at a cost, of course, and some effort.
Good. Any possibility that we might flow into revenue limit?
I don't expect that. We're about $100 million into revenue lim, we're about $100 million into it now. So we would, there would have to be a tremendous reversal for us to have that happen.
Any other, any other questions? Okay, moving on. Go ahead, Jeff. Continue, please.
Martha, you've got a couple others.
I see Shar, Shar.
Oh yeah, thank you. I have to, I have to think about raising my hand mechanically and talk. When you talked about principal apportionment, that we get $8 million of principal apportionment, is that formerly known as categorical money? Or if it isn't, what is that? Because our income is from our property taxes, so I wasn't quite clear on that one.
That's a great question. Principal apportionment, that's actually a guarantee from the state, which is supposed to be in perpetuity, and it is about $8 million, and we get, and that was due to an agreement a few years ago that the state made when we had the tax increase. The state made a, an agreement with all this basic aid, saying, we'll give you a guarantee of kind of what you lost of, in the Great Recession, $8 million a year. So that's what we're getting, but.
It's like, it's like our basic aid.
It's our basic aid, that's exactly what, it's our basic aid of one whatever it is, constituted.
Got it. Thank you, Jeff.
Okay, Michelle, I'm sorry, I didn't see you.
My question is regarding the, some of the revenue, and I was reading through Bob's insights. Now, some part of our property is somewhat from oil revenues as well, petroleum revenues, and that gets reassessed every year. Are we going to be discussing how that's going to affect our property taxes as well, considering how low it is?
Well, we're monitoring that very carefully. The auditor controller makes those estimates, and there is some concern there that that could cause some declines in our property tax growth. So we are a little bit concerned about it.
Okay, any other questions? Let me scroll down here. I don't see any. Okay, moving on. Great, thank you.
Okay, I will share my screen here. Okay, so, so here we go. So let's take a look here at conclusion and next steps. This we know, COVID-19 was really a black swan event. Hopefully, we don't have one in the near future, and we can get over it. The upcoming period's going to be really difficult. The, the bad news is really just getting started. And the 2021 budget will balance, but it's going to require some significant adjustments. Now again, we find ourselves in 2009 with no other choice but to solve this through substantial policy changes. And this is where, you know, you've been so supportive in the past when we've had to deal with these things. And although, you know, we're going to be picking up every penny we can, a strategy of picking up pennies by itself isn't going to get us where we need to go. This is, we're going to have to be very strategic and thoughtful. And in the past, the board has always yielded to continuity for students. And so we'll take your cue and the leadership that you provided us in the past in, in making this happen. And so the next steps, we're looking at, we're going to assess the governor's May revise budget. That will provide us some information on how the state is going to deal with us. We will assess our 1920 estimated actuals, and we'll know pretty much where we're going to end the year at. We're going to take a look at our multi-year assumptions and projections, and then we're going to have a discussion with you of recommended solutions and scenarios. And so with that, then, I thank you so much for your time, and look forward to bringing you updated information on May 29th.
Martha, you're on mute.
I'm sorry. Dr. Navarro, I'm going to turn it back over to you and, and cabinet members, so we can get your perspective, and then I'll turn it over to board members, because they have a couple of questions. I see you, I see you, Ashley, and I see you, and Charlene. I do see you.
Well, I, I do want to thank the board for the issues and the questions you've been brought, that have been brought up. We've also been reviewing those scenarios from the past. And I think context and structure is really, really important when you look at the previous two large impacts on the district regarding the fiscal health of, of the state. The, the embezzlement and the, and the bankruptcy of the county pretty much were a pretty quick hit. All of a sudden, there was this huge loss, especially with the county bankruptcy. And that kind of, this is similar to what we're experiencing now with the COVID-19 recession. The depth of the cut that we're facing is a lot more like the Great Recession. The Great Recession took longer, but the depth of it is pretty similar. I, I really thought that, once we got out of, out of 2012, that I'd never have to come back and face these levels of reductions. But I'm kind of having a little PTSD from my days in Anaheim and Lenox, hearing Jeff present all this information, because this is, this is significant. But I think context and structure are really, really going to be important for us to define and come back to the board with what we define as content and structure with these cuts. Because in looking at what you did in the Great Recession, you were very thoughtful about how to go through policy on making reductions. And so while this is not the time or place to start brainstorming those, because we don't have enough information, I think it's important to know that you have a history of providing exceptional guidance during difficult times. And you did what every district was attempting to do. And that is to focus on the essential services. And the essential services are what happen in a classroom. Everything else, you have to look at. And that is not fun, because there are a lot of really good things that support those essential services. When it comes down to it, it's really about a classroom and a teacher working with our students. And we will start looking as that is the context of what we're doing. And, and then come back to the board with the context and the structure of what we learned about the cuts. We don't, we don't understand yet how the state is going to affect community-funded districts. However, we know they are going to take some money from us. And we're, you can expect that there'll be equity as far as the pain that'll be distributed across the state, that we will be equally as impacted as our colleagues in LCFF districts. But I think that what's important here is you have a lot of experience amongst the board, you have a lot of experience amongst the staff. We will bring to you the best information possible, so that we can work together on how you want to roll this out as far as policies, and how we make reductions in the areas that we can make reductions. I also think it's important to know that this is going to be the first of many sessions we have to have. We will have many, many meetings, because right now, as we go through this, the board needs to really identify the priorities. We have a lot of great priorities, and you've given us latitude to, to manage those priorities. And even in the last month, we've had to make adjustments within our budget to meet those priorities. For example, we didn't think we would have to buy over 1,000 hotspots for our kids to be connected. But yet, we've showed, we've told you we've had to do that, and that's something we had to do to maintain a level of instruction for all kids. And we still are facing a lot of those types of, of choices within the priorities that you have for us now. So I'd like to hand it off next to Russell to give you his, his perspective on how we go forward here. Russell has the advantage of having been in HR during the Great Recession, and knows intimately how many districts across the county operated in making such cuts. But I want to just remind you, today's not the decision to decide, today's not the time to decide what cuts to make. This is for us to learn about where we are, and maybe start thinking about what kind of policies the board wants to put in place as we move forward. Russell?
So without getting into specifics, and this is like Dr. Navarro said, this isn't the time to do that, because we're still waiting for decisions, numbers coming in May revise. And the one thing I want to say to the board and to the public is the fact that we've been through crises before. And with the support and guidance of the board, and with the skill of this particular staff, and I'm very, very confident with this staff, that we will make good decisions based on the values and principles of our district. And Dr. Navarro hit it right on the head, that it truly comes down to the, what happens in the classroom. That's what we're about. But there are so many essential things in this district, and so many things that we are very proud of in this district that make us special. And we're going to have to look at everything. And, but right now, this isn't the time to do that. But I the time to do that. But I do believe that we have the staff, and we're going to have to make the time to be able to have these ongoing discussions to reach a good decision. The other thing, you know, Jeff has given us some nice historical information. Many of us have been in leadership roles through several of these crises. And one way or another, we get through them. We balance the budget, because we have to. Our community, our taxpayers, you know, they make sure that we are financially prudent and stewards of their funds. But there are going to be some very difficult decisions to make. But we've navigated them before. Every crisis is a little different. That's why Dr. Navarro talked about context and structure. So even though there are lessons learned and things that we've done in the past that we can look at, we need to now look at what the context is in this crisis. So we will look at the past, but we're also going to make sure that we look at what our current situation is, and make the best decisions possible. So I know this is a very difficult message to convey, but I think the one thing I want to say is that we're committed to make sure our students are supported, make sure instruction continues to the best level possible. But like we've been saying throughout this whole crisis, things are going to be different, and this is not normal. And hopefully, we will hope for the best, that things will turn around. And whether it's the Nike swoosh, or whether it's a U shape, you know, we hope that we'll be able to rebound from this quickly, not only for our profession, but for all businesses throughout the state and throughout the country.
Martha, are there a couple of questions?
Yeah, we have, we have three hands up. I did want to address one thing that Ashley asked, and I think that it's important for all of us to remember, and Jeff, you can probably chime in on it as well, is in terms of some of the things that we did, Ashley, during the bankruptcy, as well as the embezzlement, is we had SB 2X, which was able to sell property, excess property, and that's the result of Bear Street, where Lifestyle is now. We actually were able to, we got special ability in terms of the embezzlement and the bankruptcy to sell property, that ordinarily, when you sell property, excess property, it has to go into a special fund, and we were able to use that to help balance the budget. Is that correct, Jeff? So, and we don't have a lot, the boards in years past have always been very cautious about selling property. But Jeff, can you, that's one of the, is that one of the options that we used at that time? Was that not correct?
That's correct, and it was a very exceptional option.
Yeah, that's what I thought. Okay, great. I'm going to start with Ms. Snell, because Ms. Snell, you haven't had your hand up, so I'm going to put you on first.
I just want to say, I appreciate the optimism of the speakers. But this is really heartbreaking for all of us. We've done so much to address the whole child, putting so many programs in place for mental health and interventions. And it saddens me that some of these great programs could be cut. I know we'll be looking at all kinds of options, like projects, you know, that maybe we have to stop or put off to another time. But I just, I have a lot of faith in the team, and that you are going to come up with some good suggestions, with a lot of backup, with data, with what we need to do. But it is, it's really, it's really sad to me, to some of the potential. So, and I would really like a copy of your presentation, Jeff. That would be great, if we could get an email copy when you can. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Anderson?
Yes, thank you. I was wondering if we, because I know we have the May revised coming out. I've been listening to a few other cities and districts, and some people are making some immediate cuts. Do we have, have we even having any of those discussions as to, here is one thing that we can cut immediately for the next 90 days that could be a certain amount of money? Or, so that's my one question. And then my second question is, where are we with our reserves? And rather than going to the county treasurer or using other means, we have a pretty healthy reserve, is my understanding. So I haven't really heard that mentioned in this discussion today. Where are we on that? What are we thinking?
Well, I want to answer the first part, Ms. Anderson, if that's okay. And I think it's wise for us to better understand the structure of the cuts first, before we can determine what could be the immediate, an immediate source of revenue that we can tap into by reductions. So I think it's wise to wait to see which direction the state is going, because the structure and the context of the cut will have a lot to do with how we can move forward.
Well, I asked that specifically around, like, so we got the bid list, so if there's bids that would be going out May 15th, are there any of those that we would put the pause on? So it's not necessarily things that are instructional costs or employees, it's things that we could put a stop before they go out.
Jeff, would you like to address that in terms of construction and those funds?
Well, there are certain funds, like you have a 4% reserve that you have to use on maintenance and operations. That is part of what was, when you launched Measure A, was a commitment to the community. So you have that construction, that constraint. But then there's always contradictions during these times. And for example, you have the theater at Estancia, that is bond money, and that money can only be used for construction. So there are contradictions that have, that complicate how we explain where we're making cuts. And so that's why I'm suggesting that you can't really come up with a list right away until we know the context and the structure of how these cuts are going to come. Then we can reevaluate everything and determine where we can tap into money for these.
Well, respectfully, I disagree, because if there's potentially $10 million that is scheduled to be used June 1st, I think we should be having, we should be thinking about possibly pausing that. So, you know, I think to have a discussion rather than waiting, like, I would like to hear from staff that we're going through all of the bids, we're making sure that things that don't have to be funded immediately can be paused. Because I would much rather see that than us ever have to lay off teachers or anything like that for the fall. We're going to need more staff, we're going to need more mental health resources. So I'm really concerned about us waiting to make some of these decisions when we could put a pause on them for now.
Okay, again, I think you have to understand that there are some restrictions on certain funds.
I hear that.
Why we can't get into that detail right now. When we learn what the entire picture is, we will come back to you with what some of our immediate issues can be to reduce revenue and increase funding for other areas. Jeff, do you want to follow the second half of that?
Yes, thank you. So to answer Mrs. Anderson's question regarding reserves, the charts that I showed you, that includes all of our reserves, includes the, that's already assumed. So even with all of our reserves, we still need 25 million to keep the general fund whole. And so that just underscores the need for us to increase our reserves, so we can survive the cash-dry period between July and December.
Tim, anything else you want to add?
No, I think Dr. Navarro and Mr. Trader answered all of the issues.
But that's why I want us to not wait, because if we can cut out money now, we need to be preparing for July and the fall. So I just, I would like to hear more in that from the staff in the next week, not waiting.
Maybe my effort to answer your question, Ms. Anderson, that Dr. Navarro was addressing, all of those projects that you see on the bid list are all funded from restricted accounts. They are not funded from the general fund.
Well, I'm not talking about our bond money, which I think can be paused. I'm talking about, we have tons of contracts, we have tons of items on our accounting register that are over 10,000. What can we pause immediately? What can we recalibrate? I don't want us to wait until July or August, when we could be saving, we should be saving money now from things that we're not possibly even using. So I just, I'm not, I'm not hearing that we're like, the urgency, and that it's concerning to me a little bit.
Ashley, again, I think that you did, that with all due respect, what Tim just said is, many of those construction projects are coming from restricted funds. They are restricted to construction, i.e., we have a 4% of maintenance fund. That's where some of our ongoing maintenance is coming out of. It was passed with the bonds. Both Measure A was established with Measure A, and it's a covenant to the community that we were going to put 4% in, and we don't have an option. It would be a flagrant violation of the bond, and we-
I'm not talking about the bond money, though. I'm talking, part of the AC money is general fund. If we are going to be having schools close, can we postpone some of that? Like, I just want to hear that the staff are having, like, what are some immediate things that we could pause? Not just construction and not bond money across our budget, and I'm not-
I'd like to, I'd like to respond to this. I think when you take these, again, it goes to context and structure. There is information coming out of the state that schools will be reopening at some point. But we don't know if we're going to be in school closure at that point. So that would weigh a lot onto the condition of the learning environment for those schools who have yet to undergo the completion of the AC project. We would want to present that to the board in its entirety, so the board can make a policy decision about that. But without knowing how the context is going to be, when we get to reopen, how soon we get to reopen, that's going to be part of what we have to analyze in this context. So it's not, and Ms. Anderson is probably right, there's probably something we can make a decision on in a week to save some money. But the big project like AC, I think that's going to be a board policy decision. So that's not for today. We can't do that today, because we don't have enough information.
I don't want to do it today. I just want to hear that we're having, where some of those have come up and are being considered, because what I'm hearing from today, that's not in place yet. And so I would like to hear, I know that there are a lot of contracts we can reconsider. It's not, it's not just one area. So what I'm asking is to hear from staff, what are some clear areas that don't necessarily tap into our reserves, that don't necessarily respond to bond money? What are some things that we can cut?
So, Ms. Anderson, I think it's hard to answer. You can't, we can't give you that answer right now. What if the state says, we're going to take all your special ed money too?
But we have to be preparing, so-
Right, right. But, and I don't want to get, but the point is, I don't think we have enough information right now to go in and make that-
We're not, but we don't have, so what I would love to say, so this is where I'm kind of going, I would love for us to have some contingency plans, and have the staff share that with the board and the public. So here is A, B, and C plan if special ed gets cut. Here, just even just some ideas. Here is A, B, and C plan if it looks like 10 million will be cut. We're not hearing those, any of those ideas. I would love to hear some of them.
And I explained in our preface, today's not the day for that, and we will get to that point.
I believe that's what he said, that that's what staff is planning on doing.
Well, but one of the reasons I asked for us to have this meeting were, what are the current district budget priorities? Or short-term, like, that was what we talked about at the end of our last board meeting. So while today is not the day to unpack the whole budget, what the board, it was my understanding, we were asking on the 28th, what are the district's top budget priorities, knowing we're going to have to make cuts?
And I provided those to you in a memo last night. They're in the district priorities, and they're in the LCAP priorities.
No, you brought up the district priorities and what our LCAP priorities are. What are three things that we are really concerned about? Not our overall priorities, not our overall LCAP priorities. What are, what are some things we're worried about losing? What do we want to make sure that we have enough funding for, that we need to be focused on for the next three months?
May I interject?
Yes, please.
Ms. Matoye?
Thank you. What I mean, well, my points originally were, please send us the PowerPoint. Thank you, Mrs. Snell, you said that. I think Ms. Anderson is aware of the fact that in a district or any large government organization, there are buckets of money with designated funds that have to go someplace. Not just the bond money, but other monies that have to go somewhere. What I'm hearing is not, Ms. Anton, correct me if I'm wrong, Ms. Anderson, she isn't asking, what are we doing? She's asking, we want to hear that you're talking about it for this meeting. We want you here, so that it's, the public gets to hear too, that the people that are talking, that are in the room, talking about it, are going, oh my gosh, we need to have Plan A, B, C, D, and E, in case we have V, U, W, or swoosh. So that's what we're hearing now, because of course, we can't. Mrs. Flora and I explained to our congresspeople and our legislators, it's nothing more frustrating than working your little tails off trying to get a plan in place, and then hearing something from the government that totally stops what we're doing and changes direction. We just, you guys just wasted so much time, and are frustrated, because it's like, oh my gosh. So that's what we ask for. So what, and it wouldn't take you but a couple sentences to just let us know, the people in the room are talking about these things, and after the May revised comes out, we'll be able to let you know what Plan A, B, C, and D are, or what contingencies we're talking about. I think that would put us all at ease, knowing. Now, Mrs. Black, Mrs. Flora, Mrs. Yelsey, they've gone through some major crises. They know you guys are doing it. But I think that's what she would like to hear, and people in the public. And it's not a tough thing to say, because I know that's what you guys are doing.
Well, I guess the question is, Jeff, would you put up your PowerPoint where you said that what you were going to be coming back to us on the 29th was? Because I believe it was on your PowerPoint, Jeff.
There you go, the next steps.
See, look at the last bullet, discussion of recommended solutions and scenarios. I believe, and we have confidence in our staff, that they are already working on multiple scenarios and multiple, I mean, do we want, would you like to hear from each one of the staff members? Yes, this is keeping us up at night. We are looking at scenarios, we are looking at priorities. We all, you know, our simple priority has been in this, and I think all of us on the board can attest, that we all believe that the same thing we've done every single time, keep the cuts as far away from the classroom as possible. I think Dr. Navarro has said it multiple times in this presentation, is-
Well, I'm just happy to see, I mean, honestly, we're seeing Jeff's presentation for the first time. So part of my concern is addressed even by seeing, here are the next steps, we're having a discussion of solution. So even that is helpful. This is the first time we're seeing that today, right now. So that's where I'm saying, like, I just want to make sure we're hitting it, and we're at least talking about it today in some form.
And I believe that, I think that as long as we pay attention to the screen, and we can, you know, we can infer what we want to infer, but it's there in black and white, and if we have staff say it multiple times, I trust that staff is doing that. This is keeping them up at night. I will tell you that Shar and I, last, yesterday, Greg Franklin was on the conference call with John Morlock. And I tell you, he hit us with something that we didn't even think, we didn't even figure. And that was, he talked about rolling school closures, that we're all talking about the fact that school's going to hopefully open. But he said, we are starting to address the issue of what happens if we have a student or a staff member at a school who is, becomes infected. And we don't have to close the entire district, but we will have to face a rolling school closure, where a school may have to be closed and quarantined for- and quarantined for 15 to 28 days. Who, who would have thought that? And I know that I sent that to Russell, and Russell says, yes, it's keeping us up at night. I mean, these are, these are issues that, that we won't have any answers to. And how we, how we address that, the, the fact that the governor says we're going to open up and that we may have to go to split session, well, that's terrific, but that impacts our staff. And that's in transportation. And, oh, yeah, just go ahead and put dividers up in classrooms and do social distancing. These are all things that the staff, and that's why, you know, it is all up in the air. Because as Shar said, the, the governor and, and, and actually, John Morlock said the same thing, that no one's speaking to each other, that they're not letting, the governor comes out with these things and lets Democrats and Republicans know five minutes before his speech what he may say. He's not even talking to Tony Thurmond, the CDE, you know, superintendent of schools. This is ridiculous, and we've all impressed upon him the plan. And I believe that our staff is, again, trying to come up with a plan with the understanding that this board is committed to providing excellent education to our kids and keeping those cuts.
Mrs. Flor, if I can, if I can add something to the discussion. So I, I do want to assure the board that the, actually, I'm, I'm going to go back. We've already been in a mode since crisis hit, to only spend what's been essential. And I've had, had conversations with principals about that. And, you know, the, the philosophy is, we're going to, we're going to get what we need and buy what we need to make sure we fund what we need. But this is not the time to be buying things. And, and as you know, you know, conferences and all the normal stuff that we would normally be spending, we have not moved forward with. So for a lot of reasons. But part of it is just being very financially prudent at this time. And so in terms of immediate reductions that we can make, we've had preliminary conversations on that. And wherever, whatever we can put a hold on, we're actually already been doing it for the last couple of months. But, you know, I don't want to add to what's already been said. But I just want you to know that we've already been very conservative, very careful with our spending, not only today, but over the last couple of months. And, and of course, if we can make some further reductions between now and the end of the year, certainly we will do that. This is not the time to announce that. We have not gone through our process. We, so we, we want to be very deliberate about that, okay? But, but I do want to assure the board, we are absolutely having those conversations. And we've already been in a very conservative mode since this crisis hit.
Great, thank you. I have two more lights, Ms. Black.
Yeah, thank you. Part of, part of the budget process, we are currently in this school year. So we're under contract already. The board's already pretty much approved everything. So as we move forward, it will give us, you know, the opportunity to look at all the different programs and different contracts, both individuals that we hire, different services. And so I'm more concerned about, and I think I shared with Dr. Navarro and, and Martha, and also Jeff, is I would like to look at some alternatives to financing out there regarding bonds and whatnot, because I'm more concerned about our technology. And by being at the end stages and trying to catch up, is going to be more cost, you know, more costly than if we start planning now ahead of it. So, so I hear what Ashley is saying. But this is our time when we can go through our contracts that we've already approved and we are committed to paying. And in the future, we can look at each and every one of those down the road, you know, at all different, you know. And I know you're going to have all the different departments doing that, because that's what, whether, whether we're in a crisis mode or not, that's been how we've built our budgets. And as they bring back recommendations back, you know, to staff on what they absolutely have to have and, and whatnot. So it is really a good project, I think, during this time to look at it. But to start, you know, labeling things and talking about what you've cut just sends out a lot of concern with employees and whether they'll have a job and, and they'll be, you know. So I, I understand. But I also understand Ashley, because that's where I go to. I want to know.
I think we should cut a lot of other things, not staff. That's why I'm like, I want us to be planning now so we don't ever have to do that.
But programs, Ashley, programs involve staff. There's very few things that we do that doesn't involve a staff. So when you start talking anything about cuts or anything about anything related to lowering your budget, people get concerned. And that's just, you know, and we're going to be hearing it. They're going to be hearing it on the news. They're going to be hearing it everywhere. We need to make sure that we, and I know you agree with this, because I know that your community needs to be reassured as well, just like mine does. But I, but I believe that doing any kind of knee jerk at this point and making recommendations would cause more, you know, panic, quite frankly. And I think we need to have our steady pace of governance and make sure that we keep the community and our staff, you know, aware of it. So I understand, but it's not normal times. This is crazy.
It's not normal.
Ms. Barto.
Yes, a couple of things. I had a lot of conversations with people in the public recently. And I just want to underscore how things change day to day. So just for transparency, we get an email. It comes from our senators, it comes from our representatives with information. And the next night, we get an email, and that email has completely different information than the day before. So it's really a day-to-day change that we are, are working with and on. Another thing I, I think is a great thing that we do for the majority of our contracts, and I'd like to see it done with all if possible. I know that that's not always possible, but maybe now people will be more flexible, is how we have a not to exceed in our, in our contract. I think that's important to understand. For example, with office supplies, we have a not to exceed a certain amount. That doesn't mean we have to spend that amount. It just means that that is the amount that we're contracted up to. So maybe we don't, we don't, we're not in the office, we don't need office supplies as, as frequently. I think it's an important thing, too. And then just kind of understanding that there's going to be a lot of changes. There's going to be possibly rolling starts. We might have to allocate more of our budget to sanitization. We might have to, to plexiglass in the classrooms, to handwashing stations at every door. Something, something like that is something we can't foresee. And then finally, we're really going to be dependent on what our property tax payment comes in on the 21st. That's going to be a huge deciding factor. So I'm glad to hear that everyone is kind of keeping frugality in mind. And I'm glad that we have a lot of contracts that allow us flexibility. And we'd just like to encourage wherever possible that we keep those contracts with vendors that give us the not to exceed instead of the, you know, this is the set amount.
Great, thank you. Let me, let me scroll down here. Ms. Yelsey, you haven't said anything. Do you have any comments or questions or anything like that? I want to make sure that all the board members have the opportunity.
Thank you. I don't have any questions right now, but I just appreciate everybody's look into what we're, what we're doing now. And I know, I, I, just from knowing the people involved, because we've been through this, they are looking at what we're going to need to do. And as, you know, as Jeff said in his report, there, I'm, I'm sure he's looking at it every day, 24/7, probably. And I just appreciate what's going on, because, and we can hear in these conversations, you know, someone says, we can't cut mental health, we can't cut technology. I mean, we can all go through and say what we don't want to cut. And somehow, I really have confidence, and maybe it's being really optimistic, that, yeah, we're going to have to make some cuts, but I think it's going to make less impact on student learning than we may think at this point. I'm really hoping that's the case, because I think we are really creative, our district, in coming up with solutions for these kinds of things. And I think, as everybody says, the most important thing is to keep it away from the classrooms. And, and that's what we have to look at. What can we do to keep away from the classroom?
Thank you. I think the other thing that we have to remember is, and I know that Jeff, you're doing this because you're going to be providing multi-year scenarios, is that it took a long time to recover from all of these. We have teachers aides now, instead of instructional aides in the classroom. When we used to have instructional aides, back in the day, before the bankruptcy and before the embezzlement, we had instructional aides. They were, and they were allowed to be in the classroom without a teacher. That was the definition of an instructional aide. And not only in special ed, but throughout our district, we had instructional aides. When the bankruptcy hit, that was one area that we changed the focus and went to teacher aides instead of instructional aides, because of being the ability that we'd have to, we needed support, but they had to be in the classroom, because we, we increased class size, to be real honest. So there are, there are lots of, there's a lots of opportunities, and they're looking at all scenarios and all things. Dr. Navarro, what would you like the board as a next step? Do you want the board to submit to you and their, their top three priorities? And being as specific as possible? What would you like from us at this point in time in preparation for the next meeting on the 29th? Or do you believe that we should be having a, an interim meeting with just the board as relates to working on priorities? Because it is now 11:20. We're supposed, we're scheduled to go in to close session at 11, at 11:30. So what, what, what would you like the board to do for next steps?
I think our next step is to work with the board president on identifying additional sessions where we can meet with you once we get some more solid information from the state. Because at that point, the more information we have and we have an indication of what the policy changes are going to be at the state level, then we will have a better idea of how to present that information to you and then start getting your feedback on what the priorities are going to be. So I think what I'd like to do is have the boards understand that I'll be working with the board president to schedule additional meetings and that as much as possible for the board to be as nimble and available as possible in the event that we get additional information that comes out of surprise legislation that might pop up somewhere. But I think it's, I think it's very, very challenging right now, as Michelle mentioned. I'm glad you're talking or reading Mr. Blatner's information. It's, it's very good information. But I think Ms. Matoye asked a really good question the other day about our neighboring districts that want to go basic aid. Are they going to be able to go? Nobody knows. Nobody knows where they're going to be. Nobody knows what the per people expenditure from the state is going to be. They may go basic aid just because they lower the, the LCFF allocation, and they may already be above that. So nobody knows. So I think we'd love to, if, if possible, have the board, board's encouragement to meet more regularly in the next, in the next few weeks.
Great. Okay, so we'll, Dr. Navarro, I'll work with you about scheduling a, an additional study session. I know, Ms. Anderson, you are working feverishly. Dana and Michelle, you also have, you, you are fully engaged and not retired. Are evening meetings better for you? I mean, I'm trying to be, want to be sensitive to, to the.
What time of day?
In, in terms of the time of day, in terms of, for you all. So if you could just send me your ideal schedule of times of, of, times of days. We also have to be sensitive to staff, because they're working. But I just want to, I want to be really sensitive to you all, because I know that, you know, taking up a whole day or half a day or whatever impacts, impacts you. So, and your, your ability to, to do your jobs. So please send me that information. If you could just send me a text or an email, ccDrNavarro, so that we have that information and to Sherry, so that we'll be sending out a, you know, a sort of a, what, what? Let's see, I know.
Questionnaire.
Well, it's kind of, you know, it's like we, I do it all the time with another group that they, they send out a, a little thing, and they say, tell me your dates. And they put on the date. So we'll try and do that, but just, so just let us know, if you would, please. Anything else, final words? Jeff, do you have any final word? Oh, I don't see, your hands, oh, they're, your hands are up now, okay.
Mine's really quick.
Ms. Matoye?
Can we, when we close out of this and go into closed session, can we have a five-minute break in between? Sign in and then take a five-minute break?
Yes, yes.
Thank you.
We can sign in, we can close this out early, and then we can go into a closed session. And then Ms. Barto.
Mine is a freeway that we are doing well for our students that I wanted to share. So studies have shown that female students, especially from disadvantaged backgrounds, don't do as well in classrooms, because they're afraid of speaking up. And I was on a webinar about learning theory, and it's great to see in my own student classroom. So I think that there's one good thing that we're really doing for our students through this that's unexpected, is I am seeing a lot more participation from girls who are good students, but in a normal classroom, wouldn't thrive, because they're not raising their hand, they're afraid of being judged, they're not volunteering, and watching the successes fall through in my son's classroom and in other classrooms I've heard of. And hearing stories of friends who are talking about their daughters, who up to now had really struggled with school and are loving the ability to communicate with their teachers and learn and really engage, because they don't have that stigma of, oh, I don't, I don't want to be weird and raise my hand. I think it's something that's really important to highlight, because, because there's not a lot of great news right now. And I think that highlighting any that we can is valuable.
Well, and I'll tell you, we heard the same thing in the mental health task force, which was, by the way, fabulous. Angela did a wonderful job. But Bill talked about students that have a fear of school and that we have these, these, these kids that were always traditionally starving, because they're not going to school or not participating. And these kids who are normally, don't want to be in school, have a fear of school, are now fully engaged and are participating in the classroom. And it's just going to show that we are reaching kids in some instances that are known, not necessarily been, been reached before. And that this is offering us an opportunity to really think about how we deliver, you know, program and, and school to kids that just don't fit the general mold. And I'm glad to hear about the, the, the female students, our, our young ladies, because I think that's so true. I also find it fascinating in the conversations with the kids yesterday is that they just want to be together. And, you know, before we talked about this, it was always about trying to get kids off tech, off cell phones, Instagram, FOMO, all of that. And yet now, they're putting down their phones and they're wanting to be face-to-face with people, which is another, another positive thing that's going on. So with that, I have, let me go back on here, because I have to get my cheat sheet here for Sherry. Okay, so we are going to recess into closed session. We will be starting the closed session at, I'll give you until 11:35. So we have two items. We have a conference with legal counsel, anticipated litigation, significant exposure to litigation pursuant to paragraph two of subdivision D of Government Code, section 54956.91. One case, a letter from private attorney regarding threatened litigation over security fencing and drop-off parking lot project at Ensign Intermediate School. And number seven B, conference with legal counsel, anticipated litigation, deciding whether to initiate litigation pursuant to paragraph four of section D of Government Code, section 54956 dot nine. And, Dr. Navarro, will there be a report out?
I don't believe so.
Okay. So we will, may I, we don't need a motion, so we will be recessing into closed session at 11:35. Thank you all for participating, and we will get better and we'll talk soon. Thank you. It was moved by Mrs. Matoye and seconded by Mrs. Black to adjourn the meeting at 1:26 PM on 5/8/2020. There was no reportable action. There was no reportable actions taken in closed session.